Call a meeting of the President Board of Trustees to order a roll call.
Trustee Fay?
Here.
Trustee Lamb?
Here.
Trustee Peck? Trustee Rassich? Trustee Benucci?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here. Will you rise for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Presidential comments?
I have a couple. First one is, yesterday, the village of Plainfield and our Economic Development Group, I lost a wonderful person, in Tim Statenfeld. He passed away. And he's also a contributor to many charities and such in town. And it's really too bad that he passed. And my thoughts and prayers go out to his, his wife Kathy, and the family. On a second note, due to our storm Saturday, I've asked Mr. Persons, who is our Street Department Director, to make a quick presentation. It's a little out of order, but we'll try that to see. Go ahead.
Yeah, just briefly, this was a really challenging event for the village and actually for the entire area. The Chicago Tribune's already reported that this is the fifth snowiest blizzard event ever in the Chicagoland area history. So it is quite an event, and many of the entities are dealing with the severity of the event too as well. The snow total for us was about 14 inches. Of course, it started on January 31st. We called the crews out at about 9 o'clock that evening. And the crew split up into two different shifts, 12-man shifts, with each with a vehicle, two as well. And the shifts run typically 12 hours, but we were actually running 15-hour shifts with the individuals that were working. We cover 400 lane miles roadway. There are actually 388 cul-de-sacs within the village. And within that, we have eight routes. The village is split into eight routes. Each route is about 50 miles each for each individual team to cover. But four of those routes are village and four of those routes are contracted out. As far as our employees were concerned, they performed very well. The equipment stayed in good condition and the routes were covered very well. I'm very pleased with the way that our employees have responded. Some of the areas where the contractors covered subdivisions was not ideal and lackluster. And there are some improvements that definitely need to be made in that regard. And we will address those items with the contractors too as well. In any event, on late Sunday, we did call in, actually, four additional contractors above and beyond our regular contract. And I brought one slide along that shows a cul-de-sac. This is one of the 388 cul-de-sacs that we have out there. And since the snow was so deep and thick, really to remove the snow from the cul-de-sac, even the large trucks are not able to push that amount of snow. And what occurs is even if the large trucks were allowed to push the snow, the snow ends up in areas that is not desirable for the people within the cul-de-sac. It typically ends up in somebody's driveway or driveways. During a typical snow event, we'll do everything we can to make one pass in each one of the cul-de-sacs as part of the route. During this snow event, since there was 14 inches of snow, it was impossible to bring the trucks into the cul-de-sacs and address the cul-de-sacs as part of the regular plowing of the subdivision. So by the time we were through the major part of the storm, we still had to address the 388 cul-de-sacs that were out there throughout the community. Now, this is one of the large end loader. This is a huge piece of equipment. This is actually Beish construction. They are not one of our regular contractors. They are one of our contractors that we called in on an emergency basis. So I have to thank Bob Beish and his crew for coming out and helping out too. They did push the snow in many of the cul-de-sacs, and we had several other contractors out there working. But if you keep this into context, it takes us approximately 15 minutes to clear a cul-de-sac with one of these large pieces of equipment. And if you were to cover all the cul-de-sacs over a period of time, you would need 10 of these pieces of equipment. And it'd take you approximately eight to 10 hours to clear all of the cul-de-sacs. So just to give you an idea of magnitude of scale. We own two pieces of equipment identical to this. They're a little newer, 544 loader. But of course, two end loaders are not going to be able to cover the entire community. So we do rely on our contractors to assist us as needed. And during this event, our regular contracted contractors that we have agreements with did not perform as well as they should have. Hence, we did need to call out the additional contractors to complete that work. A majority of the cul-de-sacs have been cleared. One of the advantages to clearing the cul-de-sacs with the end loader is that the end loaders are typically able to scrape the snow down to bare pavement. So it's better quality work. And also, more importantly, they can pile the snow away from fire hydrants and away from driveways and do a lot better job at it too as well. So I know and I empathize with the people who live on cul-de-sacs. I live on a cul-de-sac in town too as well. My cul-de-sac didn't get plowed until today as well. But this was the best way to address this type of snow. We wish that there was better performance from our existing contractors. And we'll make sure that they, we address that with these contractors and address it in a proper way in the future for better performance for our citizens out there. That being said, the operations continue. The day shift is still out. The night shift is coming in. We'll double up until about 10 o'clock tonight. So they'll have, the day shift will have their 15 hours in. And the night shift will continue to work on drifting snow, subdivisions that still need a touch-up and to roll back snow to the curb. Any of the slick spots that need some type of abrasive material, salt or sand, will be applied to as well. And by tomorrow, things will be in a lot better shape. But I wanted to give a quick overall, so I thank you, Mayor, for that.
Yes, just one thing too, Mr. Persons. Could you address, a lot of these people have gone ahead and cleaned their driveways out to the curb, and now your trucks are going through. Could you address this? I have the answer, but I want to see how it goes.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a challenge because with this amount of snow, someone will clear their driveway and they'll come through, and then we'll push snow back into the driveway. And it is a challenge for our residents to address that. Whenever possible, we try and bring the snow away from the driveways. And then although on the other side, if we've already cleared the roadway, we ask people, please not to blow the snow from their driveways into the street. That just adds additional work for us. Throw it to either side, preferably away from the mailbox and away from any of the fire hydrants out there too as well.
Thank you, sir.
Trustees' comments?
I would join the mayor in expressing my condolences to Kathy Steffenfeld and the entire family. Plainfield lost another resident last week who was rather iconic. Mary Ruth O'Donnell passed away. Mary was a highly educated woman. She earned a master's degree in special education. She taught with that degree. She was a philanthropist. She was involved in various organizations in Plainfield. And we celebrate her life as well. I spoke with the mayor about commemorating the tornado of 1990. The summer will be 25 years. I'm talking with, partnering with the library on the organization of that. And no date or time has been set. But Tina Baird at the Plainfield Library is looking for people to contribute artifacts, pictures, and that sort of thing. They will be returned. So stop by the Plainfield Library if you have anything for the tornado memorial. Thank you.
I have a question around waste management. I know they didn't collect today. That's, Monday's obviously pushed back. Tuesday, the rest of the week pushed back as well?
Correct. Every day will be pushed back one day this week.
Like a holiday, okay. Any word from the post office? I'm not sure they delivered everything today at all.
I don't know that we had any contact with the post office today. I can follow up on that.
I just curious whether you had any complaints because a lot of the mailboxes were inaccessible. And they just might have chosen not to come out, so anyway.
Follow up on that.
Are there any other trustee comments? This would be the time for public comments. Come to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Dustin Cooper. I moved here about the middle of July. The snow removal, I appreciate what was done. The timing was lackluster. In my particular cul-de-sac, after it was all over social media that everything had had one pass, my subdivision, one street, had been cleared. Not even like a main street. And my cul-de-sac had knee-deep snow. Now, to me, that's a public safety issue. I have elderly neighbors. I have neighbors with children. From the 31st till 9 or 10 o'clock this morning, when they finally got to it, it was inaccessible. There was no way an ambulance, a fire truck, a police car could get there. To me, I mean, yeah, I live in a cul-de-sac, but I also paid a premium to live there. And I pay taxes the same as everybody else. That shouldn't be pushed off till the end and put into a hazardous situation. I think that needs to be addressed in some way. Like, I mean, even one pass with a plow before it got really bad would have been sufficient.
Mr. Cooper, can I ask you a question? Did you make any phone calls yesterday to the Public Works Department or the police? Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
My name's Greg Anzelk. I live around the block here on Arrowhead Court. Mayor Collins, thank you for returning my call today. It's, my comment here is also addressing the snow situation. I also live on a cul-de-sac, Arrowhead Court. I feel, and I expressed this to a lady at the Works Department this morning, also Mayor Collins, that a blizzard, which what's the Public Works Department said, "Well, we had a blizzard." Well, that's an excuse. It's not a reason for the streets not being cleared properly. We have to prepare for the worst every year for the full winter. The National Weather Service looked at the 20-year history of the Chicago area, its snowfalls. 1999, 21.6 inches. We have to be prepared to handle 21.6-inch snow at any given year, at any given time through the year. The 15 minutes per court, yeah, that's absolutely correct, Mr. Persons. Let's say even if you give seven minutes for the truck to get from one location to the other, because there's travel time between these cul-de-sacs, it's 22 minutes. If you had 300, I didn't realize there are 388, but if you had 300 cul-de-sacs, 110 hours, man-hours. If you want to accomplish it in six hours, you need 18 vehicles. It's just simple math. This could be planned for in September. It doesn't have to wait. You can't be calling, looking for contractors the day of the snow. It's too late then. This has to be a proactive process. A plan has to be put in place to handle the snow. Anyone with, any of the people here that are middle-aged or older knows what happened to Mayor Blandic in Chicago with the snow. And it wasn't, they didn't have a plan in place. The municipalities have, many of them have since then. It's simple math. The other gentleman mentioned the taxes. Yes, we all pay equal taxes. That's a given. We should all receive the same treatment, be processed and handled, snow removed in the same amount of time. Regarding any phone calls being made? Yes, I tried calling the Works Department several times. No one answered. I tried calling this morning, 8 o'clock, no one answered. It wasn't until I sent an email to whoever's email address that is on the Public Works site and said, "Call me ASAP," that I received a phone call. I was told that I will, that she would contact this street superintendent to find out when my cul-de-sac is going to be plowed. Finally, two hours later, I sent another email to her, "Where's my answer at?" I can't believe it takes that long to get an answer. It took that long. And I told, and I was given the reason, "Well, it was a blizzard." Well, I'm sorry, a blizzard's only an excuse, it's not a reason. So I challenge this administration to put something in place ASAP, because this is not the end of winter. Some kind of plan that we have contractors on standby farther in advance than calling the day of the winter. Four, obviously enough, you've got to have at least 18 vehicles just to do cul-de-sacs, to get them done properly. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Now, we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
I move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting and executive session held on January 5th, and special meeting with Congressman Holgren held on January 23rd, bills paid and bills payable reports for February 2nd, cash and investment, revenue and expenditure reports for December, ordinance number 3200, increasing the Class F, Class K, Class K1, Class R, and Class O liquor licenses as identified in the staff report, and resolution number 1704, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Will County 911 Emergency Telephone System Board for funding of a 911 surcharge reallocation.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through E under the consent agenda. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Ross variants. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3201, granting a variance for wall signage at the proposed Ross store located at Route 59 and 127th Street.
That is my motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Vintage Harvest Commercial. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3202, approving a variance for the height and square footage of a monument sign located at the Vintage Harvest Retail Center on Route 59.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I have a comment. I'm the one who suggests we have the larger size. And I still think it's appropriate because that shopping center really needs an identity. However, we did get a public comment that said it's going to block some other things, a sign that big. So I'd appreciate a plan. You could look into it and work with the owners of the properties and see if we can find a location that works for all of them. And maybe if you have to consider putting the people that are impacted by the sign on the sign. They're not part of the shopping center because they're out on the front side. But let's somehow try to make that work. It's got a very bad entrance. Shops don't do well, but let's see if we can help them as best we can. But I think a little external help locating the sign. And if we had to add more people, it would be useful, so.
Good, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, the motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3202, approving a variance for the height and square footage of a monument sign located at the Vintage Harvest Retail Center. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Crash Champions. We're seeking a motion to open the continued public hearing regarding a stormwater variance for the Crash Champion Autobody Shop.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.
Yes, thank you. This matter is coming before the Village Board this evening for a request for Crash Champions. They are requesting a site plan review and a special use, and specifically also a variance from the village's stormwater ordinance. That's the basis for the request of public hearing. As you recall, this matter, this property is located in Route 59. It was property, property is commonly known as Plainfield Supplies. A property that's been abandoned for several years. This is currently a picture of Plainfield Supplies. The applicant is requesting approval for a new autobody facility. The new facility would incorporate a new two-story office building facing Route 59 of approximately 3,000 square feet. So this would be the new appearance facing 59. In addition, they are proposing to reuse a portion of the existing old Plainfield Supplies facility, but also to construct a new 8,000-square-foot addition itself. This proposed new building would be precast. So it's obviously a substantial investment, substantial improvement of the subject site itself. As it relates to the stormwater ordinance, the applicant is requesting a variance from the village's and county's subdivision code. You have a memo from Mr. Amen from Baxter and Woodman outlining the factual basis for the requested variance for subdivision code as it relates to stormwater. We've, Mr. Amen can outline any concerns or address any specific concerns you may have as it relates to the stormwater variance. So with that, I know counsel for the applicant is actually here this evening. Staff would be more than happy to answer any questions that the Village Board may have.
Michael, there was a time when we used to have a history sheet as a cover sheet that gave the name of the principal or partners. Can we maybe return to that, please?
Sure.
I do have a question for Mr. Amen. I'm concerned about the variance on the stormwater ordinance, especially given the industry, the business of a car repair shop or maintenance shop. Can you talk about possible options that wouldn't break the bank for the applicant?
I guess, are you looking for options for providing full compliance with stormwater detention?
Well, I'm aware of a couple of businesses in town that have underground storage on their property.
That was one of the things that they had initially looked at in costing out the improvements for the site. And given the constraints on the site with the existing building where it is, the size of the building, the need for the increase in building square footage, and the existing parking lot configuration, the only place that they could have constructed an underground detention facility of the size that they would need would be under the parking lot. And those vaults are concrete, reinforced concrete vaults are pretty expensive themselves. Building it under a parking lot makes it more expensive because of the backfill and the removal and replacement of the asphalt that you'd have to do. And essentially, what they've told us is that the cost to build a fully compliant, full-size stormwater reservoir would make this project prohibitively expensive.
In your report, Michael, you mentioned reduction, reducing the amount of impervious surface. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, in fact, even with the variance, the applicant's new proposed site plan, and you'll see the extensive new landscaping that's being added with the new buffer area, is actually reducing the impervious surface of this property. As you recall, the old Plainfield Supplies is extensively, there's extensive impervious area, mostly all asphalt. A good, a large amount of that asphalt is actually being removed and replaced with natural landscaping and new landscaping. So the actual impervious surface is actually being reduced even with the requested variance. And as Mr. Amen's already outlined, the runoff will be substantially less than what's the current conditions.
In your discussions with the applicant, and I understand the landscaping features, are you encouraging recessed islands rather than raised for runoff?
That's something we can, as it relates to BMPs, I think that's something we can work with. I think we did mention some potential BMPs on the site. So that's a detail that we'll continue to work with the applicant on.
Excellent, thank you. The only other question or concern I have is access. Your report says that the entrance off of Hazelcrest is going to remain as well as one off of 59. And the applicant wants to add an additional access point in a proposed storage yard along the western perimeter. Can you show that on?
Yes, the applicant is proposing to have a secured access point. This area back here in the back of the building would be a secured, fully fenced in. All vehicles which are waiting to be repaired would be, would be located back here. And this would be fully enclosed, and therefore they're actually requesting a secure area with an access point. Directing your attention to existing conditions, there's actually, I believe, two access points as we speak right now in the current facility as it relates to, there's, I'm sorry, there's a full access point here on Hazelcrest. So this would be a very limited access point as it relates to only stored vehicles for storage and only those vehicles which have been damaged. So it would be a very limited access with regards to traffic.
Will that enclosed lot have a privacy gate or fence?
I believe, yes, it'd be fully enclosed.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments. I think Mr. Amen put together an awfully good report that documented the fact that our objective is to reduce the runoff. And the reduction, no matter whether one year, 10-year, whatever it is, flood type, the reduction is there, it is significant. So I think we've achieved the village's objectives there. The other thing that comes into play is it feeds into the Norman Town drain. And you noted that 3%, or .03%?
Correct.
.03% or .03?
.03%.
.03. It's a very, very small, minuscule amount that goes into Norman Town drain, which does indeed flood. But this is not likely to be a significant contributor to anybody. So I think your report was well worth waiting for. I think that's why we delayed this hearing until we got that, but it's nicely done, so thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Are there any public comments? Now, we'd be seeking motion to close the public hearing and return to the regular business meeting.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.
I would ask the clerk to take special note that there was no public comment.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board? We'd be seeking board consideration of a motion to direct the village attorney to draft the necessary ordinances approving an autobody shop.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
I do have one question. The incorporation of brick texture in the precast panels, if they're used, they agreed to that?
Yes, they have.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I do have one additional question. The proposed two-story building is cited for office space, correct?
Office space related to the business, but office space.
Okay. There's no opportunity for retail other than that, that business?
I think there may be a small showroom for the business itself, but most of the office space is for the business itself.
Understood, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, the motion was made and seconded to direct the village attorney to draft the necessary ordinances approving an autobody shop. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the site plan for Crash Champions located at the intersection of Route 59 and Hazelcrest.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Grand Park Annexation Agreement Amendment. We're seeking a motion to open a public hearing regarding an amendment to the annexation agreement for Grand Park and continue it to March 2nd.
Move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Trustee Benucci? Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Irish, 2015 Irish Parade. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the road closures as identified for the 2015 Irish Parade to be held on Sunday, March 15th, subject to the recommendations listed in the staff report.
That is my motion.
That motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I just want to thank the Village Preservation Association for hosting and organizing it again this year.
I'd like to thank the Police Department for putting together their report of the last year's parade. Gives them some good things to look out for for this year, so. I think these things are very useful to both the organizers and for us to monitor. It makes everything a lot more successful for all of us.
Absolutely.
Are there any other comments or questions?
We're going to still hold to about 77 entries to this.
Are there any other comments or questions? Are there any other comments or questions? Motion was made and seconded to authorize the road closures as identified for the 2015 Irish Parade, subject to the recommendations listed in the staff report. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Administrator's report?
None tonight.
Management Services report?
No report.
Engineers report?
You have our project status report in the packets. If there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to see if I can help you out.
Steve, I have a couple. I noticed in this report that some of the text has been cut off in these boxes, meaning we can't completely understand what's being reported.
I noticed that myself, too.
Maybe that can be checked into.
We will definitely correct that.
And then with regard to the quiet zone assistance on the fourth row, we need to hear back from the village on the deficiencies and when they will be implemented. What is the status of the quiet zone?
As I understand it, we're looking at doing some of those in 2015, making sure they get included in the upcoming fiscal year's budget so that they can be built in the coming year.
What is the, I'm sorry, what does the villages' cost and what is it for?
I don't know the details on that. Do you?
I guess specifically the 135th Street multi-use path connection that recently got approved by the ICC and that we have a grant for, included in that, we are going to install a raised curb down the center of the road, and that's one of the quote-unquote deficiencies. The delineators are only intended to be a temporary measure until a permanent barrier can be installed. So that's the main area, but we receive additional points towards a quiet zone. So in Mr. Amon's correct, we're looking towards 2015 to get that completed before the final submission.
Does the fiscal year include quiet zone to our south and west?
Yeah, we're going to submit an application for that as well. I know we've had residents ask, it's, you know, an internal, it's more of a paperwork item, but we will submit the application to the Federal Railway Administration related to that section.
Thank you.
I have to request to follow up on the Trustee Fay's statement. Once you do go ahead and get the rest of the information in these different cells, can you please email that to the entire board as well as our administrator, then he can decide which staff members may also need a copy of it?
Sure, no problem.
Planning Department report?
Building Department report?
No report.
Public Works report?
Thank you. We have a few exciting projects on the list here and resolutions related to the progression of those projects, too, as well. First is 127th Street. We've talked about this in the past. The section that's currently adjacent to the Shenandoah subdivision between Higgs and Meadow is currently more of a rural cross-section. It doesn't currently have curb and gutter, it doesn't have streetlights, and it doesn't have a multi-use path. This has been on the village's strategic plan as far as improvement is concerned. And I want to thank Mr. Jessen and Mr. Threwit for their diligence with the Will County Governmental League and the support of the mayor and board as well. This project is due to receive a $2 million federal grant, but there are some things that we have to do to prepare for that. One is a request to have it designated as a federal aid route. If the resolution is passed, staff will submit this to IDOT along with the other documents. In essence, the route has to be a major collector, which it is, and it has to interconnect with other roadways that are also major collectors or greater. As far as traffic is concerned, it does qualify as far as on our western side, all the way towards Oswego, Plainfield Road is a major collector. And then also you have Route 59, and then you have Plainfield Naperville Road, which is a, or Napier Plainfield Road, which is a major collector as well. Designating it and giving it a federal number opens up opportunities for federal grants. It does not change or limit your jurisdiction to make improvements or not make improvements along the roadway. You still have, the village still has full jurisdiction over the roadway. So I would request that the board approve resolution related to this.
That is my motion to adopt resolution requesting the designation of 127th Street from Plainfield Road on the west to Naperville Plainfield Road on the east as a federal aid urban route.
That motion's been made and seconded. The resolution number is 1705. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Second item that I have is related to 127th Street, and you'll see a very similar resolution, funding resolution, as you will, for Renwick Road. Related to 127th Street, we're due to receive a $2 million federal grant related to Renwick Road, which is part of the village's strategic plan as well. We're due to receive a $1.5 million federal grant related to that. This is part of the process where the village commits to our proportionate share, which is at least twenty percent of the cost of the project. So by resolution, the board and mayor, if this were approved, would be agreeing to fund twenty percent of the project, which we believe is fair, but it's, that's a way that they structure the grant program, and we have budgeted it for this in the long-term capital plan as well.
The persons is so excited about these projects that he skipped over the 127th. We actually have 127th and Renwick Road, both that need that same designation, so.
Have to separate them?
Yep.
Second.
Those resolutions.
We're moving along.
Seventeen oh six and seventeen oh seven. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Let me make a comment before we move to the next one. I like the competent public works on their diligence in going after grants, and twenty percent share of things we badly need is money well spent on our part because transportation's our number-one issue, and every penny we can get to help us is well worth it. So thank you very much for all the effort.
Next item that I have is actually related to intergovernmental cooperation with our neighbors to the north, with Wheatland Township. There's a section of, again, of 127th Street, but a different section, between Route 59 and, in essence, the bridge or Plainfield Naperville Road. There is a section that is within the village's jurisdiction. The township has listed this on one of their projects as far as patching and resurfacing, and the roadway is in need of that, too, as well. And that we, the intent with the agreement is that a formal intergovernmental agreement would be presented in the future, but just for budgeting purposes, that they would bid the project during, as part of the normal bidding project process, we would pay our proportionate share related to the roadway, and it would be completed at the same time by an IDOT pre-qualified contractor. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, but it's part of our communication with the other entities to really work on a transportation capital improvement plan that works well with all the, our jurisdictions around us.
Trustee Fay? Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
And the last item that I have is related to Old Ridge Road. As the mayor and board are well aware, New Ridge Road has been completed and is functioning very well with the new traffic signal. Old Ridge Road is existing, it was under the county's jurisdiction. Typically, when the village annexes property adjacent to township roadways, we automatically gain jurisdiction. With the county and the state, the laws are a little different, where they can retain jurisdiction over the roadways, and that's what occurs with Route 59 and other roadways, too, as well. In this case, the county is releasing jurisdiction of that section of roadway because it's not part of the road network. The township in the area has accepted jurisdiction where it's still in the township, but if the board will recall several years ago, we did annex property in the area, and we actually have jurisdiction over the property directly adjacent to the south section of Old Ridge Road. Now that being said, there are no active driveways on Old Ridge Road, so it's not a roadway that we have to maintain at this point, but we believe in speaking with planning that this is an important connection for the future development in the area, and there would not be a need to just abandon the roadway and let a revert back to the property owners. So our recommendation is that the village accept jurisdiction of this section of roadway that's directly adjacent to our corporate limits.
I make that a motion?
Second. I do have a question. How do we annex the property west of Old Ridge Road? Is it contiguous to the village anyplace?
Where?
There is a piece, you're talking about the Grand Park South, the Grand Meadows Project, that there's a piece.
Not shown on here.
Yeah, there's actually a piece that came in. It would be at the southwest corner of Wheeler Road and Old Ridge Road.
Okay, thank you. Just curious.
I do have a question. They show no trucks, a sign right there, but still, I believe, I'm not positive, we were having some of our truck drivers drive down that road, and then now they're stuck, and they have to back up and find a hole to get around. Maybe we're going to have to put up some better signs, and then down where it merges, it doesn't really merge, but when it connects with the New Ridge Road, they put a log, if you will, but some of the people, not during the soap so much, is now they're driving around that through the ditch. So if we're going to have to do something with the ditch or another post or whatever to stop the, you know, because it could get dangerous with some of these people going down there, going a little too fast and do whatever, so we might have to look into that.
We'll have the engineering division take a look at that, and, you know, we've already talked about some things potentially. Of course, additional signage, maybe a portion of the south section of the roadway needs to be removed, and even some of the concrete jersey wall barriers could be installed to deter people from using that as a cut-through in some way, shape, or form.
Alan, if I could comment on that, I don't believe there's any signage on 126 alerting people that the road is closed. There's signage on Old Ridge Road, but if a truck or anyone else is already committed to turning, it's too late.
We'll work with the state and the township. There's also the desire to remove the two stop signs on Route 126, and that was the desire of the county and the township as well. So we'll work with the township related to that.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3203, providing for the addition of Old Ridge Road as identified. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Well, I have. Thank you.
Police chief's report?
Thank you. The first item I have on the agenda is seeking board's approval to make an amendment to a current ordinance we have regarding vehicle impoundment. Due to some changes in state law and some changes in wording, that's part of the reason we're asking for this amendment, but also there's been an additional violation that's been added, aggravated speeding to the statutes that we can now impound vehicles for aggravated speeding. And just to familiarize yourself, aggravated speeding is any instance where someone is traveling over 26 miles an hour over whatever that posted speed limit is for that respective area. Basically, as I mentioned, most of the changes for this amended amendment to the ordinance is just wording to go along with state law, changes in state law. And also, just to let the board know as well, as far as the type of vehicles that we do impound, all those vehicles, it has nothing to do with any type of nuisance ordinance, such as loud noise or loud muffler. It has to do with actual serious traffic violations, such as the aggravated speeding, such as DUI, or actual criminal offenses. So I would be seeking board's approval to make the amendment to the ordinance through ordinance number 3204, I believe. So I would seek the board's consideration on that.
We'll move.
I do have one question. Are we going to impound all cars at 26 and over?
It would depend on the circumstances. There's several things that factor into it, mayor, such as a person's driving history. It could be an aggravating factor, such as they're already suspended or revoked, and they're speeding. And there's also, once we impound a vehicle, there's also a review process, once the vehicle's impounded for whatever reason, whether it be DUI or a criminal offense or aggravated speeding, where the person that owns the vehicle has a right to argue their case on why the vehicle, well, there's some fines that they would have to pay, storage and that, but there is a process where they can appeal those decisions as well.
Assuming that happened, I notice we paid $500 to somebody as a refund of the impound fee, so assuming that was one of the appeals and they won the situation. It does happen, so it's not. My only comment on this, and this may be the state language, but you change whether license is previously issued by the state of Illinois or another state, you change that to, or a foreign jurisdiction. I hope that's, that's a very Illinois-focused, definitely foreign to me is outside the United States.
That is wording changed due to changes in the state, the way it's ordered for the state.
Guess it'll stay, but that's strange. I'd rather, the other word seems a little better to me. Okay, thank you.
I did have the same concern, John. So the words foreign, foreign jurisdiction relates to state as well?
It relates to other states outside of Illinois. Foreign, I understand where foreign jurisdiction would, you're thinking of another country, but it actually relates to other states outside of Illinois.
Very Illinois perspective of the world.
But again, that's wording that was consistent with how the state now has their law written.
Mr. Rass is just one to know, says from time to time he thinks I'm very foreign, so I suppose it's the right set of words to use.
Are there any other comments or questions? Motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3204, amending Chapter Five, Article Eight, regarding vehicle impoundment. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you. The second item, Michael, if you could put that PowerPoint up, please. The second item I have on the agenda for board's consideration is, over the last several months, we've been looking to upgrade our property and evidence room at the law enforcement center based on space constrictions and some of the issues we've been having with some of the evidence we've been collecting as far as the, for lack of a better word, the stench that some of the drugs give off and have been permeating the building. I put, we put together a quick PowerPoint presentation just to highlight what we currently have in place and what our proposal is as far as making the change. This is our first floor of our law enforcement center. As you can see, this area here is basically our evidence and property area. This area down here is where all the evidence is stored, once it's all processed through. This area here is an impound bay where we could bring a vehicle in if it's a piece of evidence and process it inside our own building. One of the areas for storage is right here for either weapons or drugs. We have a couple other storage areas over here. Right now, this is currently just a, it's not part of property or evidence, it's just a storage, extra storage room in the police department that we store extra uniforms and things like that. And then this is our evidence processing area. This area out here, this is a hallway right here. This area right here, and there actually should be a doorway, is where the officers' working shift would be able to come in if they find a piece of evidence, whatever it may be, during a case. They could come in there and, what we call bag and tag, and what that is, is depending on what the evidence is, they're making sure it's identified, either putting it in a plastic bag, paper bag, or whatever circumstances are, then identifying it on the outside, and then they may be asking it to forward to the crime lab, or, again, depending on what the case or the evidence is, where it would be routed to. And then once it's bagged and tagged, it goes to the evidence processing area, and this is one of the areas that our evidence, our property custodian and also our evidence technicians work out of as far as if it's a piece of evidence such as a fingerprint or a cast of a foot or shoe print or something like that, they would process it in that area. Or if they need to repackage something before they send it off to the crime lab, because they're actually the people that take it to the crime lab, they would process it in this area. And then again, once the evidence is completed, either it's been completely processed or the case is done, then it's moved into the large evidence room. the case is done, then it's moved into the large evidence room. So that's our current setup right now. Michael, next slide, please. Thank you. This is what we are proposing as far as changing with this purchase that I'm bringing forward. This old storage room, common general storage room, we're looking to turn that into our evidence bag and tag area. As you can see, I have some photos that we'll be showing here in a couple minutes, but as you can see, we're increasing the area greatly because, quite frankly, when you see the photos, you'll see that our current evidence bag and tag area is very cramped space. It's very hard for two people and if you're someone portly like me, it's hard for one person at times to sometimes get in that area. So we're looking to increase the space. This right here is basically a locker system pass-through where the officers process their evidence, they bag and tag it, put it in a sealed locker, and then the evidence technicians and the property custodian, that's where they take it from the locker and this would be their new processing space. So you can see that they'll also have a larger area to work out of. There's additional equipment that we currently have stored in this saliport, in this impound bay right now, just because of space that we don't have in here that we'd like to move into this area. So it's all confined into one area. The actual evidence room itself would not change in configuration. This here in the old, in the initial slide, was basically a pass walkthrough way out to the garage saliport, which is over here. So in the event we had a large piece of evidence such as a bicycle, maybe like a TV or something like that that we had to wheel in, we had a walkway here. It was used very infrequently because basically we have an exterior door right here that could easily come through, or we also have a door right here that we could bring it through. So this walkway was used very infrequently. I could probably count on one hand, in the ten years we've been in the building, how often it's been used. We're proposing to turn this into a larger storage area to, again, store our evidence that's cramming into the areas and then we would still have our additional storage spaces that currently exist in the building. Next slide, please. Here's some pictures, again, of the area I'm talking about. This is our current bag and tag area. Right here is really where the lockers start. You'll see in another section of that. So you can see it's a very cramped space. If we have even a semi-serious crime going on, something that requires a couple officers or a lot of evidence going on, this area very quickly fills up. Next picture, please. Here's just a different version. This is where we were just looking at, the countertop. Here's your wall right here. So you can see you're talking three, maybe four feet wide at the maximum. These are those pass-through lockers I was mentioning. Right on the other side of this wall is where the evidence is processed. The officers do the bag and tag, put it in this locked locker and then they cannot open it back up. Only the evidence technicians can open it back up, so it maintains the chain of custody. Because as you can imagine, other than basic visible patrol, evidence collection in any law enforcement agency is really one of the things that you cannot do wrong, because if you mess up any chain of custody on a crime, there's a very good likely chance that the prosecution will not be able to continue. So we have to be very meticulous in our evidence collection, our evidence processing. Next slide, Michael, thank you. This is our current evidence work lab. As you can see, it's not bad sized right now, but there is some additional equipment, as I mentioned, that's currently stored in the garage just for the main fact that we cannot store it in this room. With the increasing the size of the room, we'd be able to bring some of that additional equipment in here and would also complement our property custodians and evidence technicians that we would be able to allow them more workspace as far as processing the evidence. And again, this is just the other side of those pass-through lockers. On the other side is where the officers, the street officers, put their evidence and then the property custodians take it out of this side. As you can see, they're locked until the evidence is taken out and then they process the evidence from there. Here's, the next few pictures will be actual pictures of our current evidence storage area. These are some of the drugs that we've confiscated. As you can see, this right here is really just one or two cases of some indoor grow operations, marijuana grow operations that we've had over the last year or two years. As I had mentioned in previous meetings, with the amount of marijuana that we're storing in the building at times, especially when it's first brought in the building and before it's dried out and the whole process, the smell will literally permeate throughout the entire building, all the way into the basement. So part of what we're gonna be proposing, and I'll talk about that in a minute, is an air handling system as well. And again, just another perspective of really how cramped that room is. Next one, please, Michael. And again, just more pictures of how we're having to store the drug paraphernalia and the, not drug paraphernalia, but the actual drugs themselves. Here's a second evidence storage room and you can see, it's kinda hard to see in this corner, but this is actually evidence that we have to store on the floor just because we're out of storage space right now in the lockers or on the shelves themselves. And again, just a different perspective. You can see it a little bit better, the evidence that has to be stored on the floor itself. And then this is the equipment that we're talking about moving into that processing area. This is currently out in that impound bay. These are different machines or instruments that use to bring out fingerprints, use to dry, if we have a bloody piece of clothing, use to dry the clothing properly so we can maintain the DNA within the blood samples and things like that. This is in an entirely separate room for where our regular evidence processing is, so we'd like to bring that all together. I believe that's the last slide. So that's just a quick PowerPoint to bring you up to speed on what our proposal is. Getting into the proposal itself, we've been working with, we went through the process of putting bids out. We've been working with a company to basically get our plan together. As I mentioned, it's not just the structural membership itself as far as changing some room configurations around, but also the air handling system. It's gonna be, we're proposing the installation of a separate air handling system just for that evidence property room to take care of those problems. One of the ways we deal with it now is we have to rent out a industrial-sized air handling unit that sits on the ground and basically tries to recycle the air. So this unit would be placed on the roof and it would actually be able to suck that stench again, if you will, out of the building so it doesn't permeate throughout the building. If you'll turn to the back page of the front, of the backside of the front page, I will tell you, of our total, there was one error in the numbers. The total we're seeking is $186,583. Now, it is broken down into, if you'll see, numbers one, two, and three. Number two, that number should actually be 79,860. That would be for the second phase of the remodel. And the $20,000, that's actually factored in to the 106. So it may look on the surface that those numbers don't add up to the 186,000, but if you take the number one and number two with the amended number, that will add up to that $186,000 figure. One important thing that I want to point out with this proposed project is not a penny of it will be coming out of the budget. We've been able to secure a $100,000 grant through the Illinois, let me make sure I get this right here, the Illinois-
Commerce-
Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. So we have $100,000 through a grant and the remaining $86,000 sum would come out of asset forfeiture, which much of that money is generated through drug seizures and other drug activity. So not a penny of this entire project would be coming out of the, be coming out of the budget at all. We do have a representative here from the company we've been working with, if anyone has any questions or questions for her. But I would be seeking board's consideration to authorize us to enter a construction contract service agreement with Construction Solutions of Illinois, which was the low bidder, in the amount of $186,583.
So move.
Second.
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
The price difference in the bids that we received is quite, it's substantial. I just want to make sure that our vendors that have bid and won this project are gonna be abiding by the only prevailing wage act and that, you know, I support the project, I want it to go through, but I want to make sure that we're complying here, because there's really a big price difference.
You're absolutely right. To answer your first question, yes, they will. Second question is, be honest with you, that was a concern of ours as well when we initially got those figures. So my staff vetted those numbers. We contacted places where this respective company has done work, local places such as Homer Glen, they did a huge remodeling job, actually two of them, if I'm not mistaken, at the library out there, a several million dollar project total, and they could not speak highly enough of this company. There was a couple other vendors. I don't have that information. Commander Greco may remember off top his head. Schaumburg was another place. We vetted them to see the quality of work and the timeline and everything like that and they were very happy as well. So yes, you're absolutely right, that was a concern as well, but based on the research and the, since we're a police department, the investigation we conducted, it turns out that the quality of work and the figures that they presented seem like they're right in line, yes.
Okay, thank you. Maybe just those higher bidders were getting greedy then, is what it looks like. Thank you very much.
Chief, just a couple of comments. Until you had said that this is fully funded through other sources, I was not in support. And one of the reasons is, I recall that when the current building was started, we approved a price tag of $7 million and when it was ended, it was $12 million. It was $5 million over budget. Question for you. Will the current equipment that can be used such as lockers, machines, cabinets be used in the remodel?
That's a great question. We absolutely are gonna be reusing as much as we can. We're hoping that anything that's moved or relocated, that we have zero throwaway at the end, but we're absolutely looking to recycle everything, if you will, from one point to the other point.
Great, thank you.
Second comment, I've commented favorably to Public Works getting grants. Let me comment to you guys on getting grants as well, because they're not always easy to get and you obviously looked far and wide to find this one. It's not a normal one, so, thank you.
We appreciate that, Chief, that you find the funding for it, because, you know, as Trustee Fay mentioned, the building, but that was long before your tenure as the chief, so, you know, we appreciate all that you're doing right now to try to keep those costs down and find those grants, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Motion was made and seconded to authorize the village president to enter into a construction contract service agreement with Construction Solutions of Illinois, the low bidder, not to exceed $186,583. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you. And the last two items I have is, first of all, the Plainfield Emergency Management Report for October, November, and December of 2014 and the Police Department Operations Report for December of 2014 as well. If anyone has any questions on either of those reports, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't have any questions, Chief, but I want to commend and thank every volunteer for the Pima that was out yesterday or last night or today. I stopped by the Pima Command Center there yesterday for a short time just to check and see if anything was needed and Ken Ruggles was there and we got a chance to talk and I had no idea about how wide and varied the power outages were and other incidents or that the utility pole on Main Street is broken. So thank you to you, your leadership, as well as everyone in the Pima organization.
Thank you. We, just a quick brief, if I could, yesterday we opened our emergency operations center at 6:00 AM and we kept it open until midnight, so a total of 18 hours. Those couple problems that we are still experiencing, we continue to work with Combat, one of them being Center Street, we still do have an exposed line that we're hoping to come out quickly to, or soon, to get that removed so we can then get the tree debris removed and get that road open again. And then, as you mentioned, the power pole that broke in half. The one unique thing about this blizzard versus the last one is, even though it was one storm system, you actually had two different types of storms in the one storm system. The first half of the storm was heavy wet snow and for those people that went out there and shoveled it, you know it was as heavy as it looked. Was heavy wet snow and immediately we started seeing problems with tree branches coming down, power lines coming down. We never experienced any of that in the blizzard back in 2011. Fortunately, it transitioned over to a drier snow in the second half of the storm and although we got many more inches of snow, for those people that, number one, have to shovel, it makes it that much easier, but it also alleviated the stress that was on those additional tree branches and power lines around town, especially when those winds started kicking up. So we didn't, although the power outage that we initially had, we didn't have any additional ones after that lighter snow started falling. But yes, the Plainfield Emergency Management folks, I don't have the figures yet, but again, all volunteer members, I can tell you, they put in dozens of man-hours yesterday, going out checking on people from one end of the city to the other, even out in the rural areas with our four-wheel-drive vehicles and some of our military surplus vehicles that, I'll tell you what, we couldn't have got to some places without them yesterday, checking on disabled vehicles, vehicles in ditches. They really did an outstanding job, so thank you for those kind words. That's all I have, thank you.
Attorneys report?
Thank you. Before you, you have a proposed resolution providing for rules of procedure for the public comment portion of village board agendas. A couple of years ago, the Open Meetings Act was amended to provide for public comment. While we've had public comment on our agendas for years, decades, it wasn't a requirement of the municipal code. For instance, the Community College Code is required for, again, decades, but it was never required by us. And it's generated a lot of activity around the state. In fact, the Attorney General's Public Access Counselor's Office has generated about 35 non-binding opinions, which is pretty remarkable over a couple of years, because the amendment was only 21 words. But, you know, their position is that all public entities in their committees should have rules of procedure and they recommend that we have formal written ones. As you know, our policy's been very non-restrictive. We haven't had any requirements of advanced registration. We've never required addresses, business, personal. We provide written copies of our agendas and include proposed minutes for the public and media. And, you know, as you know, just last year, the village received the Sunshine Award from the Illinois Policy Institute for making government more accessible and residents, for residents and taxpayers. And as Illinois has more than 7,000 governmental entities, that placed the village in the upper 1% in terms of governmental transparency. So these rules just basically codify existing practice and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. As a final note, the Attorney General's Public Access Counselor's Office has recommended that all committees and other commissions such as the Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeal, Historic Preservation, adopt similar rules of procedure. I've spoken to Mr. Carrigan about that.
I have a question for you. I read, unless I missed this, are we not allowing, I mean, is the public able to get up and speak about items on the agenda now, on the current agenda? Because if I read this, it doesn't restrict them like it does now.
Right, I mean-
Items not on the agenda. So are we going that route now? That's my question.
That's in the proposed rules-
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify that, make sure-
Yeah. It's tough, Trustee Bonucci, because, you know, that amendment was only 21 words and it talks about rules and recording, which, you know, rules aren't recorded. We don't, you know, you record deeds. So there's been a lot of unclear direction. In fact, I've talked to the Attorney General's Office a number of times about this and suggested and they've thought about it, but haven't proposed any model rules, because there's so many governmental entities, why not have, you know, one that they're comfortable with? Because obviously, they've interpreted this very expansively. I know at the Home Rule Committee attorneys meetings, we have a lot of people think that, you know, it's sort of been rewritten by them, but it is what it is and they, you know, are the entity that deals with enforcing it, so I would suggest we adopt some simple rules. These are about as simple as you could get, you know, and, you know, it's, you know, your folks prerogative, but I think it's best to have something. If we want to tweak them later, that's fine, but it pretty much isn't gonna change the way we do business. We've had a very open policy. I mean, like I said, just last year, we were recognized by the LMA Policy Institute for our transparency, for the website, for how we conduct meetings. So, you know, this is, this really is, is really not any major change from what we've been doing.
Right, well, thank you. I'm fine with this, thank you.
I move we adopt a resolution providing for rules of-
Take a comment first, please.
Procedure.
Second. Second.
Why don't we get the motion and second?
I just seconded, Mr. Mayor, so.
Okay. I'm not very fond of the motion, for a variety of reasons. Number one, it says speakers desire to provide, want to speak, have to provide their name and indicate the topics. When and where are we going to do that? You allow them to do it after the meeting has started, does it have to be done before? There's no indication of how or when. I think that's important. I personally like the, I think the, there was a ruling a while back that, in the courts, that you couldn't limit to less than three minutes. Am I right, Mr. Harvey, about that?
No. There's been no appellate court case. That's one of the reasons the Attorney General has issued 35 non-binding opinions, because there hasn't, there is no appellate court cases. If there was an appellate court case, that would be, unless there were two conflicting appellate court cases binding on us. There have been 35 non-binding opinions, which is the Attorney General's opinion. The one opinion I did mention to the board a couple months ago was involving Lamont, but that had to do with the mayor insisting on the speaker giving her personal address as a condition of speaking. And we've never required that as a condition of speaking. The Attorney General said, you can't do that. I mean, the act and the amendment doesn't say anything about it, so.
I recall, the Plan Commission, one time, where there were legal proceedings, and they were told, you cannot shut off public comment. That's one reason.
That's, that's not public comment. That has to do with the Supreme Court case of, I don't know, eight, 10 years ago.
That's what I was thinking, referring.
Yeah, that actually got sort of crazy, because that was precipitated by the Meyer case down the road in Lisle, I believe. Meyer versus the city of Lisle, where it turned those Plan Commission hearings into full-blown trials. And that's, I think, what you're talking about.
That era, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that got into the three minutes, and because what happened there is, the Plan Commission chairman let the developer go on for days, and then the objectors got three minutes or something like that, and then we ended up with some really bad law in the Supreme Court.
I'd like to see us not get locked into that, too.
But this, this, that won't, this does not impact that. That's a formal zoning type of procedure. This is basically the public comment, which the Attorney General said, you are free to place limitations on the public comment. That's wholly different than when you have a public hearing on a proposed zoning or special use. That is, you know, that, you've got to give people more leeway, just because it's a property right, and people in the community, as well as the owner, developer, have rights to sort of hash that out. And the Plan Commission is where they hash it out.
I'm all for public comments, don't get me wrong around that. I happen to like three minutes, but I think you can make your point in three minutes as well as you can in five. My concern is, there's nothing here that says you can't have 15 people come up with a script and talk for five minutes, exactly the same thing. And we sit there for 75 minutes before we even start our meetings. And I don't think that's necessarily appropriate. I like to say we have some control over when our meeting starts. If they want to talk on a particular subject on the agenda, maybe we want to put it in that part of the agenda, not, right now, we got public comments right up front. And I'm not sure we want to have, you know, a lot of discussion before we even get a chance to address the subjects.
And the only, the only question, excuse me, the only question I would have with that logic, sir, is, who are you going to select from that group that's allowed to speak? I mean, one, you know, number five, number 10?
No, no, I understand that issue, but we talk about if they get obnoxious or something, we can shut it off.
Oh, by all means.
I think if they get repetitive, I'd like to see some words in on that as well. Because, you know, we can understand, we don't need 10 people to tell us the same thing. But, you know, I'd like some words that gives us at least a little control over what's going on, because we do have functions we have to achieve. And I'd like to see us be able to run our meetings, love to have public comments, but let's make them appropriate, and we can then consider them. Maybe we want to pick and choose where they are in the meeting. If they're on a topic on the agenda, maybe we have them speak while we're talking, maybe as we say some things, and maybe they'll change what they want to say. If you do it up front, they have no idea where we're coming from. So those kind of things, I'd like to see reworked a little bit in this document before we approve it.
One thing just to add is, and I know you, and trust me, you know, reading these 35 opinions is not the most exciting thing, but it is what it is. And what the Attorney General has made the point is that that addition to the Open Meetings Act doesn't take away from the chair, the mayor, the chair of the Plan Commission's role to run a meeting. And it doesn't require anywhere in that amendment that the public comment be put in the beginning, the end. We're free to put that where we want. In fact, the Attorney General's gone so far as saying you don't have to put the public comment on your agendas, you just have to allow it. But I mean, logic says to me that you put it on your agenda. So, you know, this act only has 21, like I said, words, and they've interpreted how they've interpreted. And this is about as simple as you can get. I mean, we've been fortunate, as opposed to some communities, not to have a lot of those issues that might generate some different procedures. But one thing the Attorney General has made clear is that the mayor, in our case, still has the right, you know, to run the meeting, and that this doesn't affect that in any way. What they wanted is saying, hey, we feel, you know, even though this is still being interpreted mostly by them, because really, there aren't any real appellate cases that have anything similar to the 35 non-binding opinions that the Attorney General has come out with, is to have it in writing. Could we tweak it? Yeah. My suggestion is you get something in place, and you could tweak it, you know, all sorts of different ways. But it doesn't take away from the fact that the mayor's still the mayor, and gets to run the meeting. And, you know, that's why a lot of this was added, just talking about what's, you know, endemic in being the mayor, the village president, the board still run these meetings. And, and public comment doesn't mean we're turning it over to non-elected officials, I guess is the best way to put it.
Some other ways, too. I mean, like, with the, like, where the school district gets a topic and there's 20 people, they'll typically request that people try not to repeat the same opinion of something. That usually works pretty well, too, it's just a thought, so, you know, where you don't have that, so.
Yes, I brought up, I brought this up, I think, toward the end of last year, and asked if we had something in place, and the answer was, you know, we have a procedure that we follow, but nothing in writing. I think, I think it's good we put this together, that way we're all on the same page. I think it's important that we do pass this tonight. But I do agree with some of Trustee Lamb's comments about repetitive statements. Maybe we can bring it back in the future if there is a problem. If we have 15 people read us Dr. Seuss books in a row, I think we should probably amend this and see if there's something repetitive or filibustering that maybe this gets twisted. We have a policy here that says, you can't do this. Let's keep this, you know, that's where I'm at with it. But I'll vote for this tonight, but maybe tweak it down the line.
At least, at least for the beginning, let's try to have the, my opinion is, try to have the public comments towards the front of the meeting. Because like this evening, we've got 15 units, and so who's to decide whether, if the individual wants to speak on number 10, he'll hold off till then, but if he wants to speak prior to our discussion, at least he can be heard of what he has to say about number 10, rather than wait all the time to speak. I think this might make a lot more people happy, but since I've been on the board, I don't think many people have ganged up on us for, and gone repetitive. I think maybe five individuals is as many as I can remember ever coming before the board to speak. So I don't see that changing a lot.
Well, I think the procedure is, I agree with Mr. Harvey and you, that the procedures work quite well. But now we're trying to formalize it, and I think Mr. Harvey's correct, the law gives you a lot of control as village president. I would be happy to see that somehow in this document up front. Subject to, you know, village president has, you know, runs the meeting and can make decisions as the meeting goes as to where things will occur. Just make sure your rights are there. This, we're talking about the rights of the people getting up and talking, I think it's great. But you have the right to control the meeting, as I think Mr. Harvey just said, and I'd love to see that in print.
I think it is.
It may be legally correct, but, you know, if people reading this don't know that.
Four.
It's in there, it's in there, Bill. And to the, to the mayor's point, I think we need to pass it this evening to have a policy, a formal policy in place. And if we need to amend it in two weeks, we can do that.
I mean, there are some policies that go on for pages and pages, but I mean, the Attorney General, in one of their opinions, said, you know, and emphasized, the mayor and the board have the right to run the meetings. You know, having something on file just sort of lets the public know that, hey, you know, we do have a formal policy. And I think, as the mayor also said, we haven't had any particular problems. Some of the communities have little specific policies, because they've had some unique problems that we haven't. And we can tweak this. In fact, one of the villages talked about, you know, repetitive and, you know, and dealing with that, but, you know, that power is still with the mayor as it is. And, you know, I would suggest we pass a policy, have a written policy, and I can provide some, if you want to look at tweaking it, we could, we could do that. This really is a basic policy that formalizes pretty much what we've been doing. And frankly, our policy's been recognized, like I said, the village has been recognized for being very transparent and open, allowing participation. We haven't had, as the mayor mentioned, 50 people wanting to, you know, you know, read a novel. And frankly, if you get into non-German things, again, the Attorney General, in one of these opinions, says, obviously, the mayor has the right to say, you know, that really has nothing to do with village business.
Any other comments or questions? The motion was made and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 1708, providing for rules of procedure for public comment portion of the village board agendas. Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Oh.
Trustee Peck? Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Reminders?
Reminders, February 3rd is our next Plan and Commission meeting, February 9th is the next committee of the whole. The 11th will be coffee with the mayor. February 12th is the HPC. February 16th, our village offices will be closed, and March 2nd will be our next regular board meeting.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.